Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of June 3, 2025. This meeting is being recorded. First we have on the agenda is the minutes of the 5:20 meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes. And second? Joe's got it.
Moved in second to approve the meeting minutes of 5:20. Any further discussion or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed unanimous of five.
Abstention.
Excuse me. unanimous of four in favor and one abstention.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got no 81Ps. And we've got another half a minute.
Do you want to know if they want to continue what's on Agenda Item 4? You have it in writing. I think I must have given you my copy.
Yeah.
Oh, here it is. They want to continue or they want to withdraw without prejudice. They'll be seeking a special per-- or the owner will be seeking a reduced parking special permit most likely in the near future.
Motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice?
Yeah, I don't know if we officially need to, but--
I don't know either.
We'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved in second. We approved the withdrawal without prejudice for 206 East Main Street. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed unanimous of five. Thank you. Okay. Larry, you want to read the thing for the public hearing?
Public hearing. Milford Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing on Tuesday, May 20, 2025, in Room 3 in Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street. The Milford Planning Board will, at the time designated, conduct public hearings regarding the following: Application of J&R Milford Realty LLC for special permit to construct a 2,600 square foot bank building to include a drive-through teller lane and associated parking at 55 Midway Street as shown on Assessors Map 43, lots 62A and 62B, 1.84 acres in a CB zoning district. The full application and/or maps of the above items are available for public inspection at the Office of Planning and Engineering, Town Hall, 52 Main Street during normal business hours. Interested parties may express their views at the above mentioned hearings per order of the Milford Planning Board. This was published in the Daily News on the on May 6 and May 13. And I'll remind everyone that the case came up on May 20 and was continued until tonight at the request of applicant's counsel. So here we are. Okay. Let me go ahead and read in the cover.
Well, let's let them make their presentation and take it away.
Good evening. My name is David Burton-Azzi. I am here on behalf of J&R Milford Realty LLC. With me is one of J&R's principals, Rocky Campano, right behind me, Luke DiStefano, and Connor Bailey of Bowler Engineering, and Steve Saraguso of Bruspano Associates, who did the traffic study, and Richard Pila of Paramount Partners. J&R is the owner of 55 Midway Street. And the matters before you relate to that property, it's situated in the neighborhood commercial or CB zoning district, contains about 80,000 square feet. It's situated on the southerly side of Midway Street, sort of midway between Veteran Memorial Drive and Birch Street. Most recently has been used as a restaurant. There was an Italian restaurant that was there that I can't for the life of me come up with the name of.
Victorious.
Yeah, that's it. It was pretty good, too. Most recently is the Alamo Restaurant, the site of the Alamo Restaurant, which I believe closed in 2019. Since that time, it's been vacant. So J&R is proposing to raise the existing structure and to construct an approximately 2,600 square foot bank building with an associated drive-through ATM. And we are here this evening, it'll be occupied by Citizens Bank, and we're here this evening for site plan review and on the applicant's application for a special permit pursuant to Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaw for the drive-through ATM. And with that, I will turn you over to the engineers who can go through the site plan with you and review the results of the traffic study.
Great. Thank you, David. Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, Luke DiStefano with Bowler. And what I'd like to do is briefly walk through the proposed plan. I'm sure you're all very familiar with the property. As mentioned, 55 Midway Street. The applicant is looking to, as noted, raise and rebuild the entire site. So effectively, everything on the property today will be demolished and removed. And hopefully, if approved, they'll be looking to redevelop the property with a roughly 2,600 square foot Citizens Bank located effectively in the center of the site, almost in the same spot as the current building. The building would be serviced by 19 parking spots, including two accessible parking spaces located in the northeast corner of the site. The other 17 spots would be located on the west side and then on the south side. As mentioned, the property will have a drive-up ATM, which is located right here. Along with that ATM, we have the ability to stack eight cars without any interference with any of the traffic circulation patterns around the property. And then there's also room for an additional two cars on the exit side. Not that we needed, it's just a nice convenience to have in case there's people looking to enter and exit, less conflicts. The site under the existing condition is served by one curb cut off of Midway Street. The applicant is proposing to reuse that curb cut. So there's really no changes as to how you will access or exit the property from Midway Street. And that driveway, as you can see, is again located in the northeast corner of the property. Under the post-developed condition, if approved, the site will result in about, just under 2,000 square feet of additional green space. So it's a big improvement over what's on site today. Not only will be providing more green space, but the green space provided will be healthy, vibrant, well-maintained. If you've been to the site lately, a lot of the landscaping or green space that's there probably doesn't technically qualify as green space. So as you can see from the rendering, it'll be a nice improvement. They're proposing over 25 different types of trees, canopy and evergreen, and then just under 70 additional plantings to help, again, make the site more aesthetically pleasing and to help provide some buffers to the surrounding neighborhood. The site would be serviced by all brand-new underground utilities. And then one other major improvement over what you have there today revolves around stormwater management. As I'm sure you're aware, there are some wetlands that exist off the southwest corner of the property. And under the existing condition, basically all the runoff from the site effectively is diverted into the wetland. It isn't pre-treated, it isn't checked. Under the proposed conditions, if you've had an opportunity to review the plan, the applicant is proposing to collect all of the runoff from the property in deep-sump catch basins with oil water hoods. That runoff will then be directed into a stormwater quality unit located here prior to being discharged back into the wetlands. So the post-developed condition results in more infiltration, it results in less runoff rate to the wetlands, and it also results in clean runoff making its way to the wetlands versus what's there today. Because again, under the existing condition, there isn't any type of stormwater management on the property. With that, I'm certainly happy to answer any site-related questions, or I can turn it over to Steve with Bowman, who can talk quickly about traffic.
Yes.
Is it okay if I sit here still?
Anyway.
Just want to make sure everybody can hear me.
Anyway, you're comfortable.
So as mentioned, my name is Stephen Sird, who said I'm with Bowman Consulting. We put together the traffic study, which was submitted in May of 2025. We put together the traffic study in three separate sections. First one is this existing condition, going out there and observing what existing traffic is like, collecting data, which we did in April of 2025 when schools were in session. So we made sure that the traffic data was accurate as to typical conditions. We also collected crash data as per Mass DOT standards and looked at all the crash rates and everything at both Midway Road at Birch Street and Venice Street and Midway Road at Veterans Memorial. So we looked at those two intersections, one signaledized, one unsignaled. The next was looking at a no-build condition. So we coordinated with the town, the town engineering department and planning department. There were a few projects, background projects, that we kind of incorporated into our study. 31 Beaver Street, the Beaver Street 40B project. And then there's, forgive me if I forget the name of the project that's a bit south. It's in its third phase of development now. But we incorporated all three of those projects into our background scenario just to make sure that we kind of understood what was going to happen in the future. And then lastly, we looked at our build condition. And that includes some trip generation, which we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the industry standard for a drive-through bank. And came up with an estimated 26 vehicle trips during AM peak hour and about 55 vehicle trips during weekday PM peak hour. About one trip every two minutes, probably during the AM, and about one trip every minute during--
Excuse me, one second.
Sorry.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We did not take any reductions for any non-vehicle trips to the site or anything like that, walking, biking. We just didn't think that would be a correct thing to do in this situation. We also did not take credit for any pass-by trips, which are trips that are already on the roadway and will see a site, see something, and want to just turn into it. So those aren't new trips to the site, those are trips that are already on the roadway and just kind of turn into the site and then turn back out in the same direction they were going. So we did not take any credit for that. And as the last part of this build scenario is some capacity analysis, kind of just comparing it to the existing conditions and the no-build conditions I was mentioning. And there is minimal impact to either of those intersections. I think in terms of overall delay per vehicle, there was a maximum of about 0.5 seconds per vehicle in delay between the existing conditions, what's out there today, and the estimated proposed conditions. So there's a very minimal impact from the site. And then lastly, we looked at the site distance coming into and out of the site, which we thought was a very important thing to do, given, again, the overgrown vegetation and everything like that that is out there. Site distance along Midway Road is great in both directions. You can see the driveway, you can see, you know, about a quarter mile in both directions, which is plenty. And then looking out from the site driveway, looking towards the left, there is, again, plenty of site distance looking that way for a vehicle wanting to exit the site. And then looking to the right, it currently does not meet the standards, however, after site design and clearing that huge tree that is there and maintaining that vegetation, which I know is kind of part of the entire site development. Again, there will be plenty of site distance looking now to the right towards the shopping plazas and other. So again, if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. With that, I will turn it back over.
Thank you.
Pass up your business card?
I'm sorry?
Your business card? Do you have a business card?
So with respect to the special permit application, the use itself of bank financial institution is permitted as of right in this zoning district. And the use of drive-through ATMs and windows is pretty common with this use and consistent with other uses in the general vicinity throughout the town of Milford, throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I expect throughout the country. It's permitted on a special permit basis pursuant to Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws, designed in compliance with all of the regulations in our bylaw, including those relating to off-street stacking. So there isn't going to be any impact on traffic or traffic flow, either on the site or off of the site. No impairment of pedestrian safety, no negative impact on the neighborhood, no negative impact on the health, safety, general welfare of the public.
Okay, thank you. Larry, you want to read your letter?
Yeah, I'll skip to the second paragraph so it's not too repetitive. "The plans as presented are a result of consultant consultation with staff. The proposal provides for one two-way driveway on Midway Street utilizing the existing location. The site will provide 19 spaces, 14 are required. Eight queuing spaces for the drive-through are provided. And also, the two exiting spaces in the queue are required in the bylaw, and they have been required, have been provided. There's a 16-foot wide bypass lane on the original site plan as submitted for safety purposes, and a freestanding signs proposed along Midway Street, and a regulation stop signs provided at the exit lane at the driveway. All existing structures are going to be raised as they described. They've already noted the traffic report and the drainage analysis. The plans submitted for special permit approval are also sufficient for site plan review. All applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Therefore, I recommend approval of the special permit and the site plan subject to relevant agency comments." We did get a comment from the fire department. Their only concern was that the south and west sides of the building are not easily accessible by a fire engine, and they requested that the bypass aisle be widened in those areas. Water Department submitted comment letter. They wanted the existing 3/4-inch water service terminated and abandoned at the main. And the rest of their requirements are standard for new construction. So that's, in essence, a favorable report. Both of these were forwarded to the developer, so I'm assuming they've been addressed on the site plan. I had done a draft decision just for reference purposes primarily and to suggest possible conditions, if you were of mind to go ahead and act on it tonight.
So, have you been to the sewer department?
I'm sorry?
Sewer department, have you been to the sewer department?
We've had initial conversations. We haven't started any formal application process at this point. We obviously wanted to make sure the project is moving forward. But our initial discussions were such that there doesn't seem to be any issues that would preclude us from a sewer connection.
I haven't heard anything from Johns. That's something you're going to have to--
Oh, absolutely.
Well-- You ought to get it for us.
For us, for approval.
What specifically?
A report, a report on okay to put the--
We would have thought, as part of the review, we would have had a letter that indicated they have no concerns. There's a connection to the site under the existing condition. Again, we'd be looking to make that better, in our opinion, so--
As it affects, as it affects the site, if it does, we'd need to know about it as part of your site plan. So you need to, you need to close off your discussion with them before you can close off your discussion with us.
Okay.
Would your decision be made condition upon this?
Yes.
Tom Engineer, you got--
I don't really, so because this is going to be discharging into the wetlands, they're going to have to file a notice of intent. So I feel pretty comfortable. My only concern from a site plan review, I guess, with the drainage is a possible increase in the discharge to Midway Road because you're lifting the site up. So the driveway is going to be pitched more towards the road. So that's something that I'm, I want to make sure that we're not causing puddles in Midway Road. I would, I know it's an existing site, but I would like to see some sort of soil testing just to see if we can do some infiltration. I know we're not going to get anywhere near what is required for a new site, but it's something that is coming anyway, and I would like to, so I'd like to see some soil testing. But I don't, that part of it, I don't think would really affect the site plan. For the fire department, I don't know, I don't know if you changed the, at the back, where the, there was an, there's two islands, basically, separating the drive aisle from the driveway. Yeah. Basically, he was, to meet his, the fire department's comments, I think you need to just shorten it and have some more striping, I guess, instead of the island. And I, and I know that impacts from the, I know you're trying to give us as much greenery as possible, but his, his comment trumps the greenery. And same thing for those two bumpouts in the southwest corner. I would probably just pull those out. Yeah.
Okay.
No, the ones up on top, you're talking about the northwest corner?
No, the south, no, the one he pointed, that one and that one.
Oh, you're the chokers?
Yeah. I would probably pull those out just for, for fire department.
Yeah, we, and we did run, just so the board is aware, we ran a fire truck template through the property. It's tight, but--
Normally, you submit that stuff.
Well, again, this was part of the comment. We didn't know what other comments we were going to get. We wanted to make sure that we addressed as many as possible. But looking at it, knowing that there was a concern, we ran some fire truck templates through, like we always do. And the truck can get through, and we know that if we can do it on a turning template, it can certainly do it in the field. But if there's a desire to, you know, narrow these down or even stripe these two areas here, I don't see that as a problem. It's a minimal impact to the green space. We'll still have more than what we have.
Normally, that's done and updated and submitted before the public hearing starts or at worst, bring the updated plans to the meeting. But I haven't heard anything back in all this time, even with the continuance, from anybody about addressing those two major comments. So I, you know, we still haven't seen anything.
The fire chief did, you know, he, he said, yeah, we could probably get through there. But obviously, you know, it's expensive when those trucks hit something. So we want to just try and widen it out as much as we can. So I think in the case of those two, as long as, I don't really think there's a big safety impact either from removing those. So that would be, that would definitely be my recommendation.
You may want to, you may want to discuss it with the fire chief.
Yeah, this is--
We have no issue. We, we're more than confident we can make it work.
But this is something that should have been done ahead of time. You've had the letter from the fire chief plenty of time. You should have got, reached out to him, probably taken care of this, so there'd be no problem whatsoever. It's that simple. Again, like the sewer. Yeah, you're going to do it later, but if you would go out to the sewer department and ask them, then you'd have all the answers. It would be a lot easier here for the--
Can I ask, I'm sorry, can I ask one more question? The dumpster pad is pretty significant in size, I think. It's bigger than I would have expected, I guess. Is there a reason for--
Just generally for the wear on the asphalt. You've got pretty big trucks coming in to remove the dumpster and having a concrete pad that they can sit on versus asphalt usually wears better. If there was a real desire to make it asphalt, we could, but it really becomes a long-term maintenance issue.
It would be more, yeah, it would be more, yeah. I don't, it doesn't matter to me that it's concrete, it's that it's, I guess you're sticking out towards the other property. Why, why is it sticking? It's--
For access. We need it to make sure the truck can access the dumpster, so--
Dumpster's not going to be that big.
No, it's a small--
No, that's what I'm, right, that's my, that's my point.
Yeah, but the pads for the truck to be on.
Right, but can't the, can't you slide the whole thing 15 feet into the site?
Well, again, if we do--
Why not?
We, we had the dumpster in a couple of different locations, and we found that it was very difficult for the trash truck to get to. So what we did is we put it on a slight angle so he can come in, he can grab it, he can back in, and he can get out. So there's a reason why we set it where we are. And if we start to, it sounds like you want to move it kind of northwest on the property, which then pinches this area and here, doesn't allow the truck to reverse maneuver it needs to then get out and make the turn to exit the property.
Okay, perfect.
And it's, if you look, it's surrounded by evergreens--
That makes sense to me now.
So it'll be screened as well.
Yes, I wasn't thinking about the backing out part. That makes sense. Thank you.
Any comments from the members of the board?
I just had, I had a couple. I don't, I don't know that we got anything changed from them. The wall design that was submitted is not adequate for approval. I mean, that's, that's just a standard detail out of their, out of their catalog. You need to, you need to have a designed wall. We've run into issues before where people have gone out and designed them, and then all of a sudden, it's like, oh, we can't do this. You know, we have an approved site plan that you can't actually do. So we don't allow that anymore, so we actually need to have-- The only time that we, that we've ever waived that is if somebody were putting in a cast-in-place wall. That's not what you're putting in, in here. So the, especially when you have guardrail above it, too, that'll run into additional issues. So that wall needs to be designed.
It's about the, we want to make sure that there's enough space. So the width of the wall and that you can put the guardrail, if you're putting the guardrail on top of the wall, that's all needs--
Just that little design issue.
That all needs to be part of the design. That's, that's the stuff that we're looking for to make sure that we're not going to lose space on the site.
The, the other thing was, when I was going through it, pavement, I was, I was looking at it, and you had a call-out for your pavement, and then your detailed calls-out, I forget the words right now, and what we have today, I can't really see them, whether it was light pavement or heavy pavement, which doesn't reference either of the pavements that you called out for, for the actual site. And it was somewhat confusing to me, really, what I want to see for your pavement detail, your cross-section is meeting the town standard, and that's the only detail that should be on there. Because otherwise, you get into issues of somebody's going to go out there and say, oh, I have this detail, I'll do it to this, and that's not the detail that's acceptable. So the pavement detail needs to be cleaned up. I don't think there's anything wrong with it, you just need to call it out correctly and only have one so that we're not, we're not between one or the other.
It says light duty and heavy duty.
Yeah.
And has different--
Yeah, we generally show both. This is all, and my, it will all be light duty based on the Geotech report, but we can compare that. I'm sure we already did.
You need to compare it to the towns--
I'm sure we already did, but I'll make certain again that that's not an issue.
Well, and as I'm saying, I don't want to see both. I want to see the one that you're using.
That's fine. We sometimes use both. We might even be using both.
You could be using both if it's not, if it's not a travel area and it's defined that way, I have no problem with that.
Right.
But in any of the travel areas, I want to make sure that it's defined per the town standard or greater and that that's clear.
Got it.
And the only other thing I had was, and we talked about it, but I just want to make sure as we go downstream, we talked about the landscaping, is that whatever you're using for landscaping to make sure that that landscaping, as it relates to the entrance and exit driveway, is landscaping that will remain at a low height so that we don't affect the site triangle as we move forward, as those things grow. Those are the only comments that I have.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just quickly, I guess, to your point, and then also that freestanding sign and just whether that's going to affect any sight lines and if that was taken into consideration in the traffic study for, so if I'm exiting and I'm looking left, you know, is that, is it--
I'm not sure if they can--
You know--
Yeah, this is the sign here, so you'd be up, you'd be able to look right in front of that. You wouldn't have any impact.
That's not impacted.
Or you could see how we set back the landscaping as well for that exact reason. So that when you're up here, you have a clear line of sight to the west when you're exiting.
And then also, just when I'm looking at the property in general, just, you know, there's, there's lots of windows and then the downlighting. So just the overall lighting effects that it's going to have within the neighborhood and across the street, and if any consideration or any type of studies have been done there, right? I don't, I don't want to get calls from the neighborhood that they're, you know, they're trying to sleep at 12 o'clock at night and lose the football field on Friday night.
With the bank, it's not going to be open late. Most of the time, it'll be closed, probably before it can start out, and most of the lights will be turned. And then as far as exterior lighting, we only propose two freestanding yard lights, and then the building will have six wall packs. So that, those eight-- So that, those eight lights that we're using will provide all the light we need. It results in zero trespass on any of the property lines. So it's a lighting plan designed to do what we want, which is put light where we need it, and not onto any neighborhood or rights of light.
So the, yeah, the citizens' sign across the top is a, it's a non-lit sign?
Uh, that I'd have, I don't know if, you know, if it'll be illuminated or not.
Well, it's interior illuminated, if it is.
Right.
The, uh, next to the L, L 201, it's hard to read at the scale, but we got the full-scale plan.
Yeah, right.
They did the lighting plan.
Right, yeah.
And at, all the zeros are good.
Yeah. So that, like I said, it just, it's just being mindful. I, I generally like this idea. I think it's a good use for the spot. I'm just trying to be mindful for the, for the neighborhood, um, to ensure that, again, that it looks beautiful with all the windows, but if that's going to be lit up 24/7, that it's just not a, you know, it's not a light nu, a light nuisance to the neighbors across the street, right? I'd like to eventually hear from some of the neighbors I think are here, too.
I just did receive a call, and I sympathize. The last time, when they built the other bank further down, they tore down a restaurant, and the houses were infested with mice. And this one here is the same thing, and I seen it happen. Here, when they tore down Archer Rubber, they got invested terribly. So something's gonna be done. We can't, again, it's not our, in our purview to, to do anything like that, but something should be done to eliminate this problem before you do the demolition.
I did speak, I did speak with the building inspector, and that is something-
Mr. Bill is telling me they've already done pest control.
Pest control, we can provide, uh, we'll stipulate board, okay, implementation.
Yeah, the Board of Health, actually.
Asbestos abatement.
Yeah, the Board of Health and, uh, Building Commission.
If you can provide that.
When you get your building permit or your demo permit, huh, you can do that.
Absolutely.
Okay, this being a public hearing, we got people in the audience, anybody?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Now, could you, first of all, can you state your name, your address, and any communication will go through the chair?
Joseph Chermickley, I'm the trustee for the property at 61 Mayberry Road. We share a common water with the, with the proposed project, that's our, that's our home there, off to the, uh, off to the right-hand side. 2611 Wooden Hope Hill is my, is my address. So, um, we've been here before, right? We've talked about, uh, things going on with this, with this, uh, property. The first thing, if you could, could you just show the, um, the traffic flow to the, to the drive-through? I, I wasn't standing up here when you first did it.
Yeah, so it's basically, on this plan, it will be a counterclockwise circulation so you enter the site.
Yep.
You head south, you take a right into the main portion of the site, go counterclockwise around the building. The ATM is here, and then you'd exit and make your way out.
Okay. As far as the elevation is concerned, I mean, the, the L right now is built on a, a bunch of ledge, right? It's up fairly high. Is there, um, are you gonna blast that, and is it gonna be lowered, is it gonna be raised? What is the elevation of the, of the building itself?
Well, the reason we have the driveway the way we did is because we wanted to keep the building up, so we really didn't have to deal with ledge at all. We know, we were involved in the former development that was proposed here, we know there's ledge. So the reason for the driveway being as it is, is it allows us to keep the building finished floor up, so we're really not messing with the ledge.
And what is the height of the building itself? It looks small.
You know, what the overall building needs. I, I'm gonna guess it's probably in the 12 to 14 feet, not counting the tower, which might be in the-
It's less than, what is the amount? Significantly less.
Yeah, the building that's there is a two-story building today, but it'd be, this one's gonna be much lower.
Right. The, the concern, the concern my family has the same, is the same all the time. It's, um, the screening between, between two properties, right? Not all opposed to the, to the development of the property, think it's a, it's a great use for the property, but we're hoping we can maximize the amount of the mature trees that are still there, that they don't get taken down. And we're wondering what the, what your screening plan is to be able to augment that with either fences, evergreens, et cetera. It's a rental property on the side, so, you know, obviously, we're looking for maximum amount of screening between the two properties for minimum impact.
Yeah, so, again, we have the benefit of having been involved in the prior development. This, you're gonna have a much denser, uh, screening of existing mature trees between the two properties. So I think you're probably not gonna be able to see the building, even though it's up a little bit higher, the mature trees that are there are gonna be significantly higher than the building itself. We do propose some trees to help screen, and then, as I said, around the dumpster, you're gonna have arborvitae that will fully screen the trash enclosure, which is by far the nearest quote-unquote "structure" to your property.
And these trees are gonna remain?
Correct. All this is existing to remain.
Right.
So you've got a pretty nice existing buffer to stay.
Okay, will that be augmented?
Okay, one at a time. Sorry, he's speaking, excuse me.
Will the, will the existing trees be augmented with additional evergreens or something along that?
They will be, where they're taking down some of the existing trees, which is around the dumpster area, that's where you're gonna be putting-
Yeah, we had two different options. One was to kinda cut back some of the existing vegetation and plant, you know, normally you would plant arborvitae's eight feet high to provide a hedgerow. Again, because we knew that was a sensitive issue with the last design, we felt it was better to leave as much of the existing mature vegetation that's there, it's much higher, provides a much denser screen, so that's what we did. We didn't wanna cut that back just to provide a row of, you know, evergreens or a hedgerow. So I think what you have, as you can see from the render, is it'd be light years ahead of what was part of the previous development, and should provide adequate screening to the existing property.
What about the idea of putting a fence along that, along the driveway or along the edge of, between the driveway and the, and the existing trees that are there?
No, north of the, north of the dumpster.
Yeah, along here, to, to, to kinda augment the, augment these trees over here. See, there's some fencing, or, I understand there's arborvitae's around, around here, but you're just looking some-
Well, they're not gonna be able to put fencing very close to the street, because it'll become a line-of-side issue.
Yeah, I, I was thinking back here, so.
What would be the purpose?
I mean, we could, we could certainly discuss that. I don't, I don't think it's gonna provide any type of additional screening beyond what you have with the existing vegetation.
The, the, this is a picture from the top, right?
Correct.
And you're seeing the canopy of the trees when they're, when they're, when they're fully out, right? But the, the trees themselves, they tend to be a little bit lollipops, right, underneath, so it's, it's thin on the top, it's very, it's nice and thick up on, up on the top when, when the trees are all mixed up, but on the bottom, it really isn't, that's why-
The understory, yeah.
That's why, that's why I'm making the point where if you could add either, either fencing or ideally some form of evergreens along, along the edge of that, that'd be great. But if the rest of it is concerned-
We can take a look.
You guys, you guys can certainly take a look, too, but I, I can go out and-
Anybody else, uh?
Legitation, just see if-
Um, Babe, I should mention, you did have a letter from Cornerstone at Milford.
Oh, yes.
It was a favorable comment, uh, it was dated May 20th, 2025, uh, from Nicole Leoni, the executive director. And that's been distributed to everyone in your packet.
Yep. Put it there somewhere. Yeah, Cornerstone, they're supportive, they're supportive of the applicant, yeah, for this. So, again, anyone else in the audience have any comments? Any additional comments from the board? It's the pleasure of the board.
I have no problem with, uh, really with the, with the things that are outstanding for closed public hearing, um, and approve the special permit, but the site plan, um, we need to address the comments that, you know, that we've brought up.
Well, it's helpful to them, that, I mean, that's really what they, they've got a few more steps. Yes.
Well, you could, you could phrase it in a manner of, uh, the special permit, as you say, and then clarify that the site plan, uh, would be approved subject to, so make the conditional approval connected to the site plan portion and not, not the entire special permit, um, if you like. It's just more work for me, but I'll figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything that's gonna change the special permit. I mean, the, the site plan is what, what would be at issue.
Correct. Yeah, because the special permit is, is for the drive-through aspect of it, and then, from what it sounds like, and myself included, I have no concerns from the drive-through, but, right, there's been multiple concerns on the finalization of the site plan, so.
Mr. Jim, excuse me. Mike Chermickley in Girlsborough, I live at 2 Palermo Street. In regards to the fence, the only thought was, when the cars come around through the drive-in in the wintertime at night, when there is no foliage, that would prevent the lights from shining on the, on, on our house. That, that would be, if there was a vinyl fence there, not anywhere near the street, but just when they come around the corner, more like towards the, where the dumpster is, the dumpster pad is, all up a little bit further.
Yeah, I mean-
That's all, that's the only thing I could think of.
It's gonna be surrounded by arborvitae.
Yeah, so the, the town engineer's gonna go out and take a look as to how thick that fence is chasing, is there not, and report back to us as part of the site plan. So if there's an issue, then she'll report back, but-
That's fine, other than that, that's fine.
I mean, there, as, as they exit the drive-through, it's behind, it's actually behind the house, so there's only a small section that, as they turn, would be reflecting in towards the house, and she could take a look at that when she goes out there.
Now, we're gonna close the public hearing, but not approve the site plan.
That's what, that's, okay.
Well, you could approve the site plan with conditions.
No.
No?
Can, but we won't. Or at least I won't.
So you have to continue, okay, so-
Continue the site, continue the site plan.
Continue the site plan. The public, the public hearing is on the drive-through, which nobody has a problem with whatsoever, so we could, we'll close the public hearing and continue the site plan until, uh, again, they got the fire department, the sewer department, uh, something with-
They're gonna have, they're gonna have to, it might take you a little while to come up with, uh, engineer plan for the walls.
Engineer plan for the walls and everything.
Probably gonna have to run some testing, well, you're gonna have to do testing anyways for, for Liz, for the drainage.
Well, your next meeting is the 17th of this month, and then you typically only meet once next month, right?
Yes.
So, so that's gonna be, uh, is it the 15th? Yeah, July 15th.
If I may, though, a couple of questions, just one relative to the test pits, because I'm not certain, even if we do test pits, we're gonna be able to do any type of additional infiltration, knowing what we know about the soils and-
Well, as you talked about the ledge, um, I, I certainly, I got, I didn't know the site as well and didn't realize the ledge, but-
So we, we would ask that we would be able to do that as a confirmatory testing when they start construction, because anything is gonna be a benefit. So whatever we can add, that'll be something we can discuss at that point. And then as far as the retaining wall is concerned, we're, we're confident the wall can work, it's a segmental block wall, but the problem is, we, we, with the design, you're asking the applicant to spend a fair amount of money-
Yep.
-for a wall design-
Yes.
-that, you know, we're confident as engineers is already gonna work.
We're not. We, we're the ones that have to give that. We, we've had, we've had this before where, in fact, the wall wasn't, and then we're in, what do we do now? So we didn't wanna be in that situation.
Okay, I would argue that's the applicant's risk, but we can certainly work on getting you what you need.
Well, you've almost got a special permit approved, so you're kind of arguing the wrong point, I think.
Is that point?
I, I'm not arguing that point.
The board is, the board is at a point where they're ready to make a motion, somebody is, I think, to close the public hearing, approve the special permit with some list of, of conditions.
Joe made the motion already.
I think you used the word motion, didn't you?
Then continue the site plan to June 16th or July 15th. So I would let them do that.
Well, and that's why I was asking, because it's gonna impact when we continue the hearing, too.
It's not a hearing, the hearing's gonna be closed.
It'll, it'll affect when we appear before the board again.
Well, you can talk about that after they close the hearing and give you a special permit. You seem to be bound and determined not to get a special permit approved. I don't understand that.
No, I don't think they are, Larry, that's not what they are. No, the question, our question to you is, knowing that you're going to have to do the design for the retaining wall, knowing that in order to do that, you're gonna have to go out and do some testing, I don't know that you're gonna have a design to us in two weeks that we can, that the town engineer has any time to review or not review, so that's why, to me, the, continuing the site plan to our July meeting makes more sense than trying to do this in two weeks, that's-
I agree, that's what I was getting, I agree 100%.
Okay.
And just for the mechanics of that, we would be submitting documents, plans to you, or we need to be back here?
No.
No, you, you, it's part of the, it's part of the package, it's the site plan review, you'd submit, you'd submit those as design, and-
Yeah, you have to revise-
That has, because the wall isn't part of the drive-through, so it, that can be submitted as soon as you guys get it, yeah.
Yeah, that's all, I just wanted to make sure we had the time to get you what you're looking for.
And the sewer board, too.
Yeah, you need to go to the sewer board and-
By the next meeting, just make sure, on your checklist, please.
How you adjust it, you should go, once you adjust it or prior to adjusting it, go talk to the fire chief, get that straightened out and change that as he, he's happy with, and then get another letter from him that says, yeah, this is fine, before the next meeting, which I think, you know, if you're doing July, that shouldn't be a problem.
Agreed.
Okay, Martha, you seconded, uh-
I'm seconding Joe's motion.
They moved and seconded to close the public hearing and approve the, uh, special permit. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, unanimous of five.
So I assume that's based on the ambitions in the suggested decision? You, you approved the special permit-
Yes.
Subject to this draft, yeah.
Yes.
Thanks. Just checking.
Of course, of course Joe said that, you dismissed it.
Yes.
And now with, uh, motion to continue the, uh, the hear, not the public hearing, the hearing on, uh-
The site plan.
Just continue the-
Site plan review.
Yep.
Yeah, so moved.
Move second to continue the site plan review until July 15th.
15th?
15th?
One, five.
Only meet once in July.
Yes. I wanna give you time to-
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
I just, I will not be at that meeting, but as long as four of you.
Well, it's not a super majority.
I know, that's why I just wanna make sure there wasn't two more people in the same predicament.
No.
So, did you get a vote?
Any further discussion on the continuance? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of five. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, let's see.
I'm just gonna run and get a quick drink of water.
Go ahead.
Just to make sure when you're up around the other place, trying to get in a fence, maybe cut down more vegetation than putting a fence in.
I'll take some-
Agenda item three?
Yeah, we're just waiting for Martha to come back. She just went for a quick-
Lighting isn't gonna be an issue, because when they come around the corner, it's gonna be at the arborvitae's and the dumpster pad.
Right.
And by the time they get past that, it's going to be facing across the street. There's no need for a fence, but I'll look at it. But I don't think there's any need for a fence.
Thank you.
Good night, Dan.
Don't forget your.
Bag.
Bag purse, yes. Wouldn't be the first time.
Got some miles on it, huh?
Yeah. We're going to retire together.
There you go.
Okay, want to just read the thing, Martha? Let me back there momentarily. Yeah, site plan review, James, it's supposed to be an M, not an N, James Latinsky, 10 Christina Road. An applicant requests site plan approval to construct a ground-mounted solar installation on a .34 acre subject property. Small-scale solar energy systems are permitted in zoning by law section 3.1, whoops, 3.15.1 via site plan review only. The solar, small-scale solar requirements are attached in the next page. Specifically, the proposed 3-foot by 22-foot solar installation will be located along the south side of the existing single-family dwelling. Will consist of three ground-mounted solar panels located 38 feet from the front property line and located ranging from 15 and a half to 17.1 feet from the side, from the south property line. I mentioned in my report that no system plans or specs have been provided. He has since, sent some in. Site plan is submitted, does not indicate the nameplate capacity of the system, which he has since also provided, since it can't exceed 25 kilowatt DC. It does not specify the height, and he has submitted information to provide that. All other applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Therefore, I recommend approval, subject to relevant agency comments. Page in, the water department was the only agency that responded, and they had no problems. And you can see on the various site plans where the installation is and what it looks like. I think. I don't remember if, did I get it in your packet? Jim had sent over an email.
Yes.
You sent, yeah.
So the email, yeah, the email cover sheet has the, the height, which is a little over 51 inches as well, under the 72 limit. So, and it's 24,000 watts, which is less than the 3 kilowatt. So it would appear that it would be in compliance. He has some additional information there in terms of the individual panel dimensions, and there's some graphics in terms of what some of the bracketing looks like, the framing for the panel, or for the rack that the panels are mounted on, and also the tie-down to the footers. So it all appears to be in order in spite of the fact that I only got the rest of this today. So I'd recommend approval as submitted. Any comments from the board?
Couple. One is, when you look at the, the overall layout, is that shed in conforming to setbacks on the property? But obviously, it's not in our purview, but just make mention of that. And then the other is just, as far as what exactly is needed for, for its foundation, I guess I'd look to the, towards the town engineer, and is that something that just the building department will have to inspect, I'm assuming?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, obviously, we're just looking at the site plan in the offset, but we also, as we talked about, in the last individuals that were here, we had some concerns with the, the wall. So do we have any concerns that there's no details as far as the pilings that would hold this now?
No.
The wall is, the reason we have it is the room, the other special provision to put the wall in.
Yeah, I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah, no, it's, it's far enough, it's, it's far enough, I think it's far enough from the house. I can't imagine that the, the foundation would force it to move, like, closer to the lot line. So I'm, I have no problem with that.
Right, yeah, I just more of like, is it a 10-inch diameter, or is it a 24-inch diameter? Like, what scale, scope? That's why I'm.
It'll, it'll almost certainly be within the footprint or not much beyond the footprint of the actual panels. I do, so this is, this is a relatively small array, so I'm not as concerned with this, but are they going to leave it grass underneath? Or, you know, what?
Right.
Because that, well, well, not whatever, because it matters to me from a drainage perspective. It seems to be sloped towards the road.
It's got to be sloped. No, the panels have to be sloped to the neighbor's property, but it's, panels are probably four, four wide and not be 80 feet long, so it's 80 feet, they'll be sloped, because that, I'm sure they're sloping them towards, towards the south face, so they're going to, they're going to be in like, like this.
Okay.
And the house is going to be here.
Correct.
Then it is going to, it, it could potentially.
Grass.
Right, but it could potentially, you know, what, I, I just, it's something, I guess, I would, I would prefer to see, I would prefer to see either like crushed stone or something at the, at the edge of the drip line, just to, to help infiltrate what, what runoff you're going to get, and, and make sure it's not heading over to the neighbors.
15 feet of grass, the.
Just my recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with the drainage. I don't, I, I think it's fine.
I don't see a problem.
Well, I, I mean, i- i- if the array were bigger, maybe, maybe to some extent, but the other problem is that it's, it's a maintenance nightmare that no one's ever going to keep up with. So if we really think it's an issue, then it's, it's going to show up whether we require it or not, because no one's going to keep the.
How do you mow beneath the?
Oh, beneath the panels is a different story. I mean, I don't know. There, to keep it clean, I might put stone there, but you're not going to get any, any infiltration through there. The drip line you can mow to, because you're going to be up four feet below the drip line.
Right, but if you're, if you're going to have not grass underneath the panels, because I don't, I don't know how, I, it doesn't make any sense to me that you would have grass there. Extending whatever surface you have, an extra.
It's going to start working its way in, is what's going to happen, and it's going to end up being at the edge of the panels where the grass is going to end up coming into, no matter what we do, is what I'm saying.
And Liz, going back to you, you know, the drip line concern, are you afraid of, or afraid of concern with just consistent erosion in that spot, and then whatever sort of cascading effects from there?
It's a, it's a, it concentrates a flow.
Right.
And it does so just as, just as if you were having a roof, like, for a house or a shed, or, and, and again, this is very small, so I'm not, it, it's more like a shed, which I wouldn't, I wouldn't bring up, I guess, typically, about a shed and needing to, you know, have crushed stone or gutters or whatever.
Mentioned something we could have found out from the applicant, but you didn't comment either. The only comment we got was from the water department.
We appreciate the comments now.
My deepest apologies.
Can I, on that, though, Liz, sorry to berate on this, so would it be best, as we move forward, and to set a precedent when we get there, I know it's obviously not within the bylaws, the building code, to say, hey, we want crushed stone underneath extending one foot beyond all drip edges?
So it was supposed to go into, it was, it was due to go into the bylaws at this last town meeting, but we have, we have to basically rewrite our bylaws to meet some stormwater requirements for the MS4, and so rather than changing it to then, you know, revamp the whole thing, I just took it out.
It wasn't, it wasn't part of the zoning and site plan bylaws, it was part of the general.
Stormwater.
And that got complicated, as Liz said.
So it's going to, it's not something you need to worry about, because in October, it's going to be part of the stormwater bylaws, and it will apply to this situation, so I will.
Do we have an opportunity with this one to get ahead of it?
No.
I, I don't think it's, I don't think, honestly, this one is so small that I'm really not worried about it.
Fair enough.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Question, approve, make, approve the site plan as submitted?
Second.
They moved and seconded, we approved the site plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five. Okay.
Okay, you already.
15 Cape, 15 Cape Road.
31 Beaver Street.
Oh, oh, excuse me, yeah.
Yep.
What am I checking back at?
31 Beaver, Milford Realty LLC. Applicant requests amended site plan approval to construct a commercial building and associated parking on the 8.9 acre subject property. It's in an ID zoning district. Specifically, the proposed 35,040 square foot commercial building will be utilized for indoor recreation purposes. Total of 140 off-street parking spaces are being provided. However, specific employment estimates have not been provided. The facility will be connected to Town Water and will utilize non-site septic system in lieu of connecting to the town sewer. Parking and circulation are appropriate for the proposed use. The drive aisles and fire lanes designed to accommodate equipment and truck turning. Also, a complete stormwater report has been submitted with the site plan. Also attached is the access event that the town invented over the triangular portion that connects this property driveway to Beaver Street. Town meeting approved that back in 10/24/22. All other applicable zoning and site plan requirements appear to be met. I recommend approval, subject to relevant agency comments. After several pages of easement document, we finally get back to, fire department had some suggestions about the hydrant and the guardrail. I believe that's been addressed.
Yes.
The water department has their fairly standard laundry list of specific requirements for this site, and pipe size, I believe those, if they weren't already called out on the plan, it's been amended to reflect that as well. And that was it. Take it away.
Okay. Michael Hassett here from Gary, Aaron, and Hallman, representing the applicant, Milford Realty Development LLC. As Larry mentioned, little history in the project. It was first approved as a site plan on April 4th, 2023. It was then amended August 6th, 2024, and this is as various tenants have agreed and then backed out, looking to, looking to take residence on the site. So it has an active order of conditions with the Conservation Commission. It is going to be serviced by Town Water and a private septic system. The layout compared to the original remains largely the same in terms of the limited work. So the limited work remains substantially the same, no changes there. The retaining wall layout has not been revised. In the general pavement configuration and grading and drainage are all remain the same. So what, what really changed is there used to be an approximately 52,000 square foot building that extended down into where this parking area is shown now. The current tenant, which is Slick City, which, as he says, is an indoor amusement, you know, action park, like those trampoline parks with slides and other, you know, physical recreation uses, is looking to take tenants here, and so we reconfigured this area. This was open pavement to sustain the maneuverability of tractor trailers. That's no longer needed, and so 140 passenger vehicle parking spaces are proposed. Handicap spaces in the center aisle here. Main entrance is right here. All the grades in the parking lot are between the 1% to 3%, very flat. This paving base is unchanged. There's a lot of reparation portion of the project, that remains unchanged. You know, I think, you know, the total impervious area on the site has gone down. It was 2.85 acres total impervious, that's been reduced to 2.49. And I think, you know, right now, we have a place holder septic on the site. I didn't want to dig it out of here, but it's basically under this parking lot here. Right now, it's sized for approximately 35,000 gallons per day. Obviously, that will still need to go through permitting with the Board of Health, some additional soil testing. But that's really the extent of the changes. I'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
I think the site plan bay is on sheet six in the reduced size plans that are, in fact, it may be on the last page, shows where the location is, or next to the last page. It's in the area Mike had indicated.
This is a 35,000 square foot building?
Yes.
Okay, now. The wa, you got a water line coming in for the fire suppression?
Yes.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, I think they may have, I'm looking through their memo again. I thought they addressed that. Can you call Mike?
Yeah, so we have.
So it might not be on that septic.
The water main comes through, it's on sheet six of the, of the site plan set. So the water main comes in here, across, without crossing, all of this stays the same. There were no changes at the crossing.
What size water main?
I don't recall the top's in there. It would be, I believe, probably a 800. We start using the service.
Yeah, they got a hydrant in, inside the property.
Yes.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, there's two hydrants, there's a hydrant here, this is the one you thought in the boat, the fire department, in the guardrail, the gap in the guardrail there. And then you have another one here, and he is asking us to relocate to one of the islands.
Yeah.
And we're happy to do that.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Just the, the hydrant that, yep, the, the hydrant, you're, you've got it between a gap and a guardrail there?
Yeah. He, he suggested that we could relocate it across the street into this area here. We had that identified with no storage right now, but if it were the pleasure of the board for us to move it over on this side, we would have no objection to that.
I mean, it's a low-speed area, but it's not a good place to have, hydrants with gaps and guardrails, not a great thing. I mean, they, it becomes a blunt, it becomes a blunt end, which isn't the greatest thing in the world. I mean, if we can avoid it, I just assume avoid it, and that way you don't have the gap in the guardrail. If you can put it on the other side, to me, it makes more sense.
I, I don't believe the applicant is in it under any particular attachment to the allocation. I do note that the project is under construction under its previous approval, so I don't know the status of the water main. That might already be in with the hydrant. I don't know exactly where that's been left, but if, if, if it's not in, I'm, I'm sure he'd be happy to relocate it, as discussed.
Yeah, it would just be cleaner. I mean, like I said, it's a low-speed area, so it's not critical, but it's not the best.
It's on the exiting side, at least.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, I almost, it's on the inside, it'd be, it'd be kind of tougher.
If it's done.
But I understand the concern.
There's no sense in putting fittings in that aren't necessary at this time, once it's, once it's built, so.
Okay. So I'll, I'll double-check that, and if it's already built, then we'll leave it as is, and then if it's not in, then I can work with Liz to facilitate its relocation.
No comments, actually, good.
No, I just noticed that the fire and water departments both had some fairly extensive comments. Well, fire not so much, a couple, a couple of requested modifications. And the water department had quite a number of comments.
Installation things, it's got nothing to do with us. We've tried for years to get the staff sending us that stuff, and they refused.
I got them to stop for a while, then they.
Just starts over again.
No, they're back at it. But the fire department did request relocation of a hydrant and adding more fire lane signs. Do we need to see those modifications on a plan?
That's what we talked about, the fire.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, it's fine.
We don't object to any of the fire department's requests, so if, if, if it was the board's pleasure to include that as a condition of approval, you know, I can work with Liz to place the signs and, or in the fire department, to place the signs and make sure the hydrants are to their satisfaction.
The, the only concern I would have is the increase, obviously, of traffic because of the change of use. the change of use now. Any studies, or can we ask for a study to be done on that?
At this time, I don't believe an updated trip generation was prepared.
What I will tell you is that the previous applicant included this as part of their traffic study. This was one of the items that I knew was coming in front of us to be changed, so when they did their study...
You mean the bank building?
Yeah, the bank building. They incorporated this change into...
Their impact projections and this.
Why would they do that?
Because they're required to, well, anything, anything the town's aware of, they have to, any changes to surrounding sites, they're required to include as part of their, even pending ones. Yeah. Yeah.
The only traffic time at, on that road, well, heavy traffic is at three-thirty when waters gets out. Other than that, there's no...
Yeah, but you're gonna have people coming from out of town. These are...
Yeah, but they're all gonna come down Bridge Street, they, and there's one way.
Go around, yeah.
For now.
Yeah.
Which may lead to my next question, then, yeah. So if I'm exiting, if I look at that curb cutting, it allows for you to naturally go to a right-hand turnout? Obviously, there isn't going to be a sign on that corner and a sign across the street. Are we concerned that that curb cut kind of flows towards allowing for a right-hand turn? And does anything different need to be there? So, you know...
No. Because you gotta have, you're allowing for the left-hand turn for them to get in.
To get in, I realize.
You got a straight shot to get them, to get out, so...
Yeah, I just worry, you know, to Joe's point, you're gonna have out-of-towners in here, and that, so that sign, signage better be very explicit of no right-hand turn currently.
I honestly, you're gonna have less of an issue in that case because people are gonna wanna take the left to go to the highway. They're not gonna wanna come back out and go all the way around.
And that radius, too, may be important for fire maneuverability.
Yep. That's, one hundred percent, that's why. I bring it up as there are some negative effects as far as, yeah, fire, you know, a fire truck maneuvering in, but in the same token, I worry about someone not from the town taking a right-hand turn out of there on a dark rainy night and just not paying attention to something.
Situation, it's like, we don't know how long interim is.
I can, yeah, I can...
Right, that's the other thing, too, is I was inferring from the discussion that it might be no longer one-way in, at some point in the future.
Right.
And if that's the case, then, you know, you'd be putting in a narrow radius that would then be...
You have to change it.
You have to replace it.
We're actually, we're doing, we're starting the design.
Yeah, but my question is how it is now, right? Like, I, I'm not part of the conversation of the future in a sense of making that a two-way road, so that's why I bring that up now, and to ensure.
We're hiring a design engineer this week.
Almost as we speak.
Right.
Excellent. No further questions, here?
It's a pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve the amended site plan for thirty-one Beaver Street.
Subject to, subject to fire department, fire department.
Is there still any water?
Fire department?
I don't think there's anything in question. I'll second that if someone didn't.
Okay. They moved and seconded. Any further discussion? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll be right along.
Now we go to Cape Road.
Now we go to Cape Road. Amended site plan, Campers NRV, thirteen Cape Road, map fifty-two, lots two fifty-seven and one eighty-six D to the commercial C-zone. The applicant requests site plan approval for a change of use on the subject property. The proposal is to change the formerly used car sales and service use to new and used RV dealership. The new vehicle dealerships are allowed as of right in the commercial C-district. Fifty-six off-street parking spaces are to be provided. Fifty-one are calculated to be required. There are no additions to the building being proposed and no additional areas to be paved. All other applicable zoning requirements appear to be met, except for the landscaping buffer required by section three point four point four D-one. The display lot paving extends uninterrupted to the back of the curb along Cape Road. Also, the existing freestanding sign is designated for relocation. However, no proposed new location is shown on the site plan. Therefore, I recommend approval, subject to relevant comments and subject to provision of a ten-foot wide landscape buffer along the Cape Road frontage. We got comments from the fire department. He had made notes about the propane tank and setbacks to it. The capacity of the tank wasn't shown. Details were not provided regarding vehicle protection for the tank, and he's recommending the additional elimination of parking spaces immediately abutting the tank's location on the east and the west sides. Property has a flammable storage license, which will require an amendment to add the propane storage. The water department had no conflicts in their review, and those were the only two reviews received.
I got one question before we start. Why is this before us?
Change of use site plan.
It's a change of use. Sales, kind of vehicle sales, or vehicle sales?
We do have some restriping that's gonna be going on over here as well, so at least we're trying to go through the effort here for the town. I mean, to a certain extent, you get the change of, the change for the propane tanks and stuff, which wasn't part of a vehicle.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
For the record, John Federico with Gary, Aaron, and Halmon, and tonight I also have with me Greg with Campers NRV, in case there's any specific questions there on that side. But we have taken a look at the comments, in particular to the fire department comments. We have no issues with having no stalls adjacent to the propane tank. In terms of the propane tank itself, Campers World typically does put a fence with a gate and a lock around their propane area, so there will be some type of protection there. But again, we have no issues with having the extra stalls relocated someplace else. As far as the license goes, I don't believe we have any issues with that. I'm just not sure who the license is through, if that's through you folks.
Sure.
Okay. So we'll definitely make sure that we do take appropriate action on that end. As far as a couple of the other comments go, with regards to the sign location, we have confirmed that we will utilize the existing sign location, so I'll make sure that we do have a revised plan back to the board, just removing that note on there, also showing those relocated stalls up near the propane tank. We've also added in a dumpster detail that is in the vicinity of that propane tank, just to make sure that we do have adequate onsite there. And regarding the landscaping environment, we didn't outright ignore anything there with it already being existing site fully paved. We did want to try to improve to an extent, so we were going to be offering up planters that would have a minimum of two trees in each planter along each of the existing light posts that are there. So from my count, I believe that was five that we had shown along the front edge of the property. But in terms of any reasons for why we didn't want to go with the full ten-foot, in terms of the display area that we have there, we wanted to make sure that we had some flexibility with being able to get some of these potentially larger vehicles or anything with a possible trailer involved from ripping up any of the proposed landscaping that's there. We didn't want to also have any issues with the site distance or any, the site triangles as well. So by at least trying to avoid that right now, we were gonna try to keep everything at a minimum there and keep it as open as possible as it's currently standing.
I would say that you're probably gonna want to have bollards around the propane tank in addition to the fence.
Yeah, as far as it goes, that won't be any sort of problem or anything.
That would... And then, if, if you did put in the ten-foot landscaping, that would push those spaces back and require relocation of that fence, basically, right?
As of right now, I don't have the specific dimension for it, but I do know when we were initially doing a turn movement, there was a little bit of a tight side in between the existing fence and where those stalls were proposed.
Well, the site plan that John's drawn has the parking on their property, so my comment about the landscaping buffer would technically be in the right-of-way, not on their property at all. So there's fifteen feet of pavement from the back of the curb to their property line, and that's where John has the parking stall striped and the display area striped. So he's got it all properly located in terms of where those are in relation to the property line. So my thinking was that typically a sidewalk's five feet, so from the curb back the first five feet, obviously, you leave that as the asphalt crummy sidewalk that's out there now. And then from that point back ten feet, that gets you to the property line where John has everything striped properly. So it's that ten feet of asphalt that could be removed and some kind of landscaping put in there, and obviously, it's easy to meet clear sight distance with that type of an arrangement because everybody else has been doing it all over town. So that's, that's where I was coming from with that, because it doesn't affect the usable area that, you know, that he has to display the vehicles.
Yeah, that's certainly, that's certainly a more reasonable expectation, I think.
Because I think what he's, what he's showing, I mean, the only, the only thing from a practical standpoint, and it, I'm not sure whether they might want to address it, but from a, from a technical zoning standpoint, they probably don't need to. But there's no place for a customer who isn't driving an RV to go there to park their car unless they go all the way into the site and around the building and park over with the staff. So you might want to put some thought into not having every square inch of parking.
These are parking spaces.
So we do have, I believe it's eight or eleven spaces.
Eleven spaces.
Eleven, yes.
In front of the building.
Eleven spa, okay, I'm sorry.
Handicap stalls as well. So we do have something in an accessible area. We don't necessarily anticipate we're gonna have a heavy load of people coming in like you would with, say, a car dealership, so just to at least meet the parking requirements, we were utilizing some of the existing striping that's already out there for it. But again, we can work with the board on any particular constraints you might be looking for there.
Frank's ready to go over there.
Oh, yeah? I knew exactly who you were talking about.
So you got one customer, and you can barely wait to get there. No, so the, my whole thing with the landscaping was that everything that John's shown is appropriate to the site, his use of the site staying on his own property, which is more than I could say about the prior car dealership. He was out parking right up against the curb. But nonetheless, the area is there, you know, leaving a five-foot sidewalk or even a six-foot sidewalk and do a nine- or ten-foot landscaping strip, and it doesn't all have to be solid plant materials. And certainly, you can't do that and maintain clear sight distance at the driveway anyway, but there's room there to accommodate that. So that's why I made the suggestion. Doesn't affect the operation.
The owner of the company, his concern there was that with these RVs, with some of them, you know, starting anywhere from sixteen going up to forty-four feet, and because you have to move them with a tractor, now your total movement could be sixty, sixty-five feet. So all of a sudden, if we don't have even that wiggle room to manage the RVs, especially when it comes to plowing and stuff like that, that, that actual ten feet of space that we now have to...
That's highway right-of-way, that's...
Well, it's, we're not gonna park up against it, but what I'm, but you're still, we're still gonna plow that area, right? I mean, we're still gonna have that area ten feet between us that we'd be plowing, and at that point, maneuvering, it still might maneuver into that area before we put them in their final parking spot, just based on the length of the units. Now, having said that, we still want to do something with the property where we have some trees and we have some sort of buffer there, and what we're hoping for is something that we can actually move if we need to, and that's why we're talking about planters and things like that, where we could actually, if we had to, move them out of the way, if we needed to, for plowing and access and things like that, but to have them there for making the site look really nice.
I know another concern you've brought up in the past is that if you remove pavement, you have to dig out an awful lot to then get it to be a plantable, growable...
I mean, I'm not sure, ten feet, you probably could get enough to have something that's plantable. The plant is, I mean, unless you're gonna spend a lot of money, you're gonna, you're gonna have dirt and nothing else. You're not gonna have trees in there, I can tell you right now. There's no way you're gonna grow anything that's gonna last past a year. It's a waste of your time and money, to be totally honest. I mean, you know, we've had people come before us and stuff and, and stuff like that, but, you know, it, it doesn't do you or us any good, really. You know, if you're gonna put planters in, my, my suggestion would be forget the idea of putting planters with trees, small plantings, you know, flowers, things like that that you put in and annually you might have a shot at it, but to, to put in trees is a waste of time. I mean, Larry's idea certainly would be, it serves two purposes because I know why Larry mentioned it, is exactly the reason he had mentioned before, where the previous people had effectively parked in the right-of-way, the state right-of-way. And without having anything there, that's what we end up, you know, getting as much as we, you know, oh, we're not gonna do that, and, you know, a week after, they've got their occupancy permit, it's like, jeez, I wonder why that car's so far out? It happens, you know, I'm not gonna blame anybody or whatever, somebody goes out there, you know, the car jockey that's out there doesn't know that he's supposed to stop at the line that's there, he goes out to the end of the pavement. It sort of is one way that we can control, making sure people don't do that. Again, I, you know, I like the idea that Larry had. I don't know that trees are the proper thing, but, but some sort of greenery in that area would actually, I think, would, would improve your site and make it look a lot better, too. So, you know, I think it's something to think about, but I, in terms of the planters, again, if you wanted to put planters, I wouldn't require there to be trees in them, because I just don't think they're gonna survive.
Skip the planters and just plant trees?
Well, they don't really have a place to plant them, that's the thing.
It'll require a ton of removing pavement.
Yeah, I was gonna talk about the planters, too, that's exactly what Joe said, so I get over his remarks. Second remark.
Certainly, same, just to chime in, yeah, I agree with the planters. I could understand, yeah, not wanting trees back there because you're gonna have someone that's, that's backing up and they're gonna back right over those trees. You know, when you're trying to maneuver a forty-foot travel trailer in between the other trailers that have already been parked there, you know, putting, putting trees along that zone is, as nice as they may look, are gonna get plowed over by, by someone inadvertently, too. And then also, I think trees are also gonna be a detriment to the showcase of your product. I think, yeah, you know, putting out planters with nice flowers that are low-setting are, is a better use and will look better along that property, so, yeah.
Just maintain them, too.
Yes, no, we, I mean, generally, we have thirty-five dealerships and we do a good job trying to keep them looking nice.
Yeah, I have no, I understand the situation there. I have no problem approving it, subject to having them address the fire department's comments and then taking a look with Liz in terms of what they can do to try to maximize some green space on the site, based on the comments that they've heard tonight, and see what they come back with, but at least that gets them at least a little bit forward.
Yes.
Second.
Looking, looking at the site and the comment of the long trailers, which I understand, but the last, the last parking, the last five or six parking spaces or seven parking spaces from the railroad to the building, you could back your trailer down, the long ones there and the shorter, the shorter ones in front of the building, put that ten-foot parking area in. I don't see a problem there.
So you're, you're still, the distance between the front of the building and the road with parking RVs, you're still gonna have, even with a fifteen-foot RV, which is gonna be our shortest one, with a... be our shortest one, with a 12-foot span to 15-foot span on a tractor with a bucket, you're still going to end up with 30 feet of movement trying to move in there?
What's the distance from the...
I believe our front setback is a certain... as it stands right now.
From the right-of-way?
Ah, yes.
Yeah, I think part of the problem is the perceptual problem of, it's paved right now out to the street, so, you know, the specific dimensions that we're talking about are to an invisible property line. We're trying to make it not invisible anymore.
I mean, if you did it, if you did it with a curb at that point on the property line, you'd end up with a two- or three-foot overhang that, depending on how you did your, could still be green. You could put bushes or something in front of that three-foot, I believe, and still have enough room that you could have some sort of plantings along there, but you'd have an overhang that takes up part of your dimension that you gave us, because you're going to, you can, you'd be able to push the vehicle forward to the curb and move it out if you needed that extra space. Because you've got the front overhang of the vehicle that would be available to you for moving.
Let's try to picture. So I get what you're saying. It's, the only thing that, because of the way that when you move these RVs, too, is it may be 30 feet in length that you have for the tractor and the RV, but the way that they're in space together, you can't pull out and start turning right away either, or else you're just going to crash into the other RV because of the swing on it. So you might have a 30-foot rig, that's if you have the smallest travel trailer on the property, you probably still have to pull out a good 10 to 15 feet before you even swing it so that you don't hit the RVs on either side. So it's really a logistic issue of moving the units around that we're going to run into if we tighten up that space at all. And when we looked at the property, it was already a concern, when we looked at the property saying, geez, is this front even going to be usable for us based on the amount of space we have to maneuver the trailers? And that's where we're just concerned that it's going to render the front end useless for us if, you know, or we're going to have to have them angled that such a, that it's going to be so limited on what you can show and the aesthetics of that, it's terrible, too.
What's the, I don't have a plan that's big enough to easily read. So what's the length of the frontage that's paved from that north edge to the south edge?
Approximately 420.
So it's 100, point it out on the thing, from where to where?
So going from this edge here all the way through what we have...
To there is 120?
...to this point here, that's about 420 feet.
420, yes. So the most constricted is what's in front of the building. So if you look at all the rest of the site southeast of the building, you might have to move the fence back, but you've got unrestricted space there to do all kinds of turning. The most restricted space is immediately in front of the building. So that might not be the place you want to pack with RVs. In fact, that might be where you want to move some of the visitor parking to open up the side even more. It just seems like from a layout standpoint, it's kind of shooting you in the foot to try to put...
Yeah, but I would assume they want the RVs on front layers.
I would say if it's very important for the board to have the landscape, I guess my recommendation sort of along, or my thought would be require the 10-foot landscaping just on that one side where they do have a little bit more room and not in front of the building.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. That's why I said, you know...
Kind of a compromise.
But all of that's in the right-of-way. None of it's on...
I understand.
So it is all in the state right-of-way, so, yeah. That would be an alternative way to approach it, yes.
Just a little bit of a compromise if it was important.
Well, as I said, I mean, I think the motion was, you know, do, sit with you and come up with what is available, that we can do some sort of landscaping, just to show some sort of landscaping on here. If in front of the building doesn't work at all, I'd like to see some effort made to do something in here.
I just don't want that to be contingent on the approval side of things. I feel like what they're proposing and understanding what they're trying to accomplish, creating any type of green space out front is just going to be a detriment to how they're going to need to maneuver their product. And it's not in, it's not in our purview to tell them how they're going to run their business and how they're going to station everything.
It is in a certain sense, because they're constructing their business on public property.
They're just displaying...
Well, no, they're saying they need to use that in order to turn the vehicles in order to do it. So we do have some purview on it if we wanted to, and the assumption that you can use public property is an assumption is a leak that shouldn't...
Is it an easement or is it public?
No, originally, they were on state property. The previous owners, multiple owners, had paved into the state right-of-way.
Okay.
Never got approved, never did anything. Then it showed up on plan, so that's how we got to where we are.
But they're not saying they're going to park on that.
No, no, they're saying they're only going to move on it, so they're conducting business on an area that normally...
Not there.
In order to conduct it, so I'm...
There's plenty of other places around town where that's...
Yes, there is.
Are we really concerned with a travel trailer that's going to be conducting business on a 10-foot swath of pavement for less than 10 minutes?
No, I'm not that concerned with it. I'm just saying that I believe that us asking to put some level of landscaping on the site is certainly reasonable.
Right, it's reasonable to ask. I just don't want it to be contingent on the full approval of the site plan.
No, I don't think the motion went that way.
Okay, that's why I just want to make sure.
The motion kind of left it up to Liz to figure out what would fit.
Right, that's why. I just, if they can't come to a compromise, I just don't...
Well, if I can't come to a compromise with them, then they can come back here and say, she's being unreasonable.
Whatever, he clicked, exactly.
Push it hard.
So having said that, so you got a motion in a second, is...
Yeah.
You ready?
Yeah, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Analysts of five.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Do you have a card with you?
Uh, I may have one of my... Okay, we got 21 Madden Avenue for zoning referral.
Yep, 51 Madden, map 40, block 17, lot 19. So variance request, the applicant requested variance to allow for the construction of a 28-by-36 detached two-story garage on the subject property, which they swear up and down is not going to have an ADU upstairs, but it doesn't matter anymore. The existing shed and pool are to be removed. Specifically, the proposal is to construct the shed within, construct the garage within the rear yard setback. The adjacent parcel had originally been reserved for future subdivision and street. However, since it was never completed, that would have otherwise, what would have otherwise been a required front yard along that street is now just a side yard. But it also reverts the easterly yard now in question to being a rear yard rather than a side yard, and that's why they need the variance. So I recommend favorable report, forward to the ZBA. I tried to blow up the section of the plan that more clearly showed the setbacks, but the first plan gives a more overall layout that shows why there's roundings on that area that, oh, thank you, that goes to the back lot. And then I included an aerial that kind of shows it again as well, so it's unlikely that that's going to be a subdivision. There's extensive wetlands on this property, which is why it was never developed. So I recommend favorable to ZBA. If any of that makes sense.
Pleasure of the board?
Recommend favorable report to the ZBA?
I'll second that.
You can move the motion, excuse the motion.
They moved and seconded to send a favorable report to the ZBA.
Let me just add that, with that, just to include, you know, favorable with the emphasis on no water and sewer connections to be done to that walling.
You can't do that.
And an ADU.
Right, I just want to prevent that, the ADU. They're saying it's not, so again, if...
They can do an ADU by law. They could come in and do an ADU right now.
I realize that, right, they're going to have to come back to us.
No, they don't have...
No, they don't anymore.
Wow.
Attorney General said site plans are...
So if they wanted...
Attorney General didn't approve, does zoning bylaw change?
Not all of it.
Right, approved part, approved part of it, but the site plan approval part is...
Is gone.
But they still need a special permit or variance or... No.
No, no, no.
Nothing. They just go to the building commissioner?
Yep.
No kidding?
This proposal needs a variance because they want to have the building setting cockeyed on the lot. If they straightened the building out, they wouldn't need a variance. And so they would just be able to build it by right, and if they wanted to have an ADU up there, they could build it right off the bat. Well, they'd need the building permit to do it. They could just do it.
To get the building permit, the building department is going to be working with, in particular, the water department and the sewer department to make sure that those are being covered. So it was never really in your purview anyway, but this, but it's being addressed, is I guess my point.
If we can add, just again, from my side, if we could add some verbiage, just saying, because on their application, it says that they're not going to have water or sewer. So my vote, and if I'm going to vote for the favorable recommendation, is going to include saying from our side, they can, ZBA doesn't have to listen to us, but I would like for our recommendation, have no water or sewer, that's all. You guys should shoot me down, I just want to make that up.
I will amend my motion to that effect. And does Joe's second still stand?
Yes.
Your Joe, I'm sorry, the other Joe, pardon me.
They moved and seconded to send a favorable with the comments on the sewer and water. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any else to come before the board? Yes.
I just want to clarify, so now ADUs just go straight to the building department, no permits needed?
No, there's no site plan, the zoning bylaw that's been updated.
Can I just finish my question? So no approvals needed by this board or the ZBA, just straight to building department?
Not necessarily, it depends on the situation. If you have a situation like this where the building placement requires a variance, they need to go get a variance, but that has nothing to do with the ADU.
The ADU itself requires no approvals by other boards. The ADU use, correct.
The standards for the ADU, all of them got approved but for three. And if you look at the updated bylaw that I emailed everybody, in fact, I emailed it to you twice because we discovered a major formatting change that just occurred by magic, I guess. So you got a new version that has all the formatting corrected. The section for the ADU has reserved for future use in the places that the AG didn't like the language. And the first one was site plan review. So because she didn't like the way our bylaw talks about site plans, she wouldn't approve that section, but she approved all the rest of it, but for a couple other points, and you'll see those in brackets that say reserved for future use. The formatting of the section that got amended is the same, it's just the part that she didn't like was removed and replaced with reserved for future use, because the town council may want to come back.
Was it specific to us because of the way our bylaw was? Basically, I thought the original law said that you could request site plan review.
Well, I'll forward you her lengthy email review of it, multi-page review of it, but it's because site plans, you can require changes, or if they aren't met, in theory, you could deny a site plan. So she didn't like that.
Why did they write the law to begin with that way?
But you look at the rules that the state came up with after the law passed, and they didn't follow the law either. They made stuff up and made it even worse. So no figure. And now the AG is using that bogus set of rules as if it's more authoritative than the law itself. So, you know, they're just making it up as it is.
Well, I mean, the whole thing was made up as it went along anyways.
I think if we had had a sep, like, if we had had a reference to a separate site plan review procedure or rules governing it for the ADU, that wasn't...
Why the site plan could be approved or not approved like that?
If it was, because the only thing it could be reviewed under was a commercial site plan review, right?
Right.
So that required such a substantial, I think that might have helped, but maybe it, I don't know that it would have made the difference, but I definitely think that was a big problem, is it was overreaching to apply a commercial, basically, site plan review to ADU.
Well, but her specific point was that in theory, the board could deny it, and she didn't, she said it can't have any denial accompanied with it. Well, why would you have a site plan review if they're setting it in the middle of the street like...
Yeah, exactly, because we've had people put things in property they don't even own, for God's sakes.
If you have a lot on the street, you go to the building commissioner, you get a building permit. If you have a garage, a house in a garage, you want to make an ADU, you go to the building commissioner. You don't have to come for a site, you don't have to come for any lot that's existing on the side of the street. You don't, so there's no reason to come for an ADU.
Well, I'll send everybody the email, but check in the new bylaw that's, I sent the PDF out, and it has a new section, and it has all the other stuff that you recommended in town meeting adopted. But you'll see the three points, reserved for future use, that's all the stuff she didn't like. So I think the town council is going to come back and try to fill in those spaces, maybe at fall town meeting. And we'll see what the new town planner says about that.
Are we good?
Motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
They moved the second to adjourn, all those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that was five. Good night.
Thank you for our book.